In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Act of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic, where we stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Councilman Chase. Mr. Kobel. Mr. La Court.
Here.
Ms. MacIver is sick. She has to be excused. Mr. Mettler.
Yeah.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Onyaka. Chairman Arcini.
Here. Claude Kobel told me he'd be out of town and traveling as well, so he has an excused absence. Okay. No minutes from last week yet, right? Vince?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. So we go, oh, anyway, before we start, let me just start by saying that one of the hearings on our docket is going to be carried. That's Melmid Construction, PLN 12-0-0-1-0, carried to June 5th, 2013, and notification, re-notification is required. So if anybody's here for that tonight, that's going to be heard June 5th, and there will be another notification sent out. So with that, we have resolutions. We have one, Carson, PLN 12-0-0-1-2.
Remove the resolution.
Second.
Mr. La Court.
Yes.
Mr. Mettler.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Chairman Arcini.
Yes. Okay. Discussion items, resignation Charles Alderman.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, for health reasons, Mr. Alderman resigned two days ago. Just wanted to make the board aware that made the manager aware, and hopefully they'll be taking a look at reappointing someone in the near future to take his spot.
We go to the Board of Ed then for their presentation on their school improvement plan.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, as per the municipal land use law, they have a bunch of capital improvements on a bunch of their buildings, and they're required to come here to give a presentation. I will tell you, for the last six or seven months, we've been working very closely with the Board of Education and their staff. We've met with them on numerous occasions, and things have gone very well, and it's culminated with the presentation tonight.
May want to make sure that mic's on, yeah. Up and across. You can take it out if you want, if it's better, because you got to put it real close.
Are we on? Is that better?
Yeah, no, you are.
Thank you. My name is Scott Mahalik. I'm an architect with SSP Architectural Group. Together with Design Resources Group Architects, we're working on, as was indicated, the capital and infrastructure improvement plan for the Franklin Township Public Schools. We're here this evening with an overview of several of the projects that needed to come before your board for review, in particular, work being done on the exterior at Hillcrest, Pine Grove Manor, Elizabeth Avenue, and Sampson G. Smith. There are, as was indicated, a host of other projects that are going through their Department of Ed review and approvals at this point. These are all leading up to a public vote later this year. I'm going to have Pat Cywell from DRG start with an overview of their work, and then I have Todd Hay from Panoni Associates, who's our civil engineer for Sampson Project, take a look at those.
Nope. Whatever you think is appropriate.
Pat Cywell, Design Resources Group Architects. I'm going to deliver the Elizabeth Avenue, Hillcrest, and Pine Grove scopes, the drawings that were previously delivered, some of the highlights. And I'll start with Elizabeth Avenue, basically the order of magnitude. Elizabeth Avenue is one of the larger additions that's planned for the district. Some of the highlight numbers for this project. We're looking at an existing building square footage of 53,000 square feet and change. The proposed addition being 33,000 square feet, or a total square footage of 86,780 square feet. The existing parking area that you have there now is approximately 112 spaces. We're looking to get that up to 134. Ultimately, the grades that are going to be housed would be pre-K5, and the capacity of 900. The site plan that you're looking at there, I'll just go to my notes, is pretty straightforward. The dark area that you see behind the building, just to orient you, the Elizabeth Avenue is across the top of the page. The existing building is highlighted in a dark outline or a heavier line in the middle of the graphic there. The darker blocks that you see behind the school, that would be the actual addition. And once again, we're looking to improve not only the traffic flow for buses in and around the site with some additional pavement, but also to increase some of the parking spaces in and around the site. We go to the next page, and once again, a pretty significant addition. With the totals or the occupancy that we're targeting for this site, we're going to have to improve some of the core spaces that you see there in the graphics, and then obviously multiple classroom spaces around the back of the building there. We're aware of the technical review committee's comments with regard to some of the parking, stormwater management, barrier-free. We'll be able to, once, if and when we do pass referendum and site and civil engineers engage, we'd be happy to, once we get to a 60%, send another updated construction set of documents to the technical review committee so they can review these items once again. To move on to Hillcrest. Hillcrest, just to, once again, to orient everybody, Franklin Boulevard is down the bottom there in the site plan. North is kind of straight up the page. The existing one-story building there is outlined in a heavy line, and we're planning a modest addition, that darker area with some additional parking at back. Some of the numbers at Hillcrest, the existing building is 48,515 square feet. The proposed addition, once again, a very modest 5,364 feet for a total of 53,000, almost 54,000 square feet. Parking spaces, we have 99 now. Proposed parking would be 106. And once again, it's going to be a pre-K5 with a scheduled capacity of 470. Floor plan there, the darker section. The school is scheduled to have additional, what we're calling special education spaces, and that's basically going to come off in a block off to the left side of the plan there. Single-loaded corridor, pretty straightforward as far as the addition goes here for Hillcrest. Moving on to Pine Grove. Pine Grove, a very small addition. What's planned for this particular site is to provide some barrier-free access to the second floor of the existing building. We're proposing a very small lobby area out in front of the building, and that will house a generous lobby, and then we're going to try to get the elevator kind of inboard where we had some small resource spaces that we're going to take up for an elevator that's going to run from the first floor, obviously, to the second floor. Some of the numbers there for Pine Grove. The existing building of 63,655 square feet. The proposed addition, once again, very small, just a lobby out front, 1,100 and change for a total square footage of almost 65,000 square feet. Parking's going to remain unchanged. We do have some capital improvements planned for Pine Grove in the way of some paving and walks and things like that. But once again, we got the comments from the technical review committee, and we're well aware of some of the comments there with regard to, once again, stormwater, barrier-free access, angled parking. And once again, if and when we do pass referendum and we engage a site and civil engineer, we'd be happy to bring the technical review committee back up to date when we get to about 60% documents. I'll open it up for any specific questions on these three projects, if anybody on the board has anything.
Any questions from the board? Comments? No?
Okay. Scott?
My name is Todd Hay, Panoni Associates. I'm the civil engineer that prepared the civil plan that's before you on the exhibit and within your packets. Essentially, I'm going to just walk around the actual additions that we're doing, starting with the front addition. We're proposing a main building addition at the front of the school, at the front drive aisle, approximately 1,200 square feet. In association with that, to the north, if you look to the left of the page, there is the gymnasium addition as well that's proposed. It's approximately 17,000 to 18,000 square feet. Associated with both those improvements, there's a need for parking. There's a net gain of 34 parking spaces and reconfigured lot.
Sampson G. Smith, now we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
I apologize.
I didn't.
Sure.
I thought so, but I wasn't sure.
No problem.
Okay.
What you'll find is that there's a net gain of 34 parking spaces to the, both to the west and also to, actually, to the north. And what you'll find is that we've essentially shown handicap spacing to accommodate both the gymnasium as well as the front addition. What we've also proposed is underground stormwater management, which will accommodate the addition. There's no net increase in stormwater management. There would also be any other associated utilities, for instance, lighting as well, which we proposed in our plans within your packet as well. And of course, there would also be associated sidewalks that would exist along the exterior of the gymnasium, as well as the front entranceway, which would be reconfigured for the addition. And I believe that is it with Sampson G. Smith. Do you have any questions for me?
Will you be needing the stormwater management plan that's suggested in the comments?
Yes, we will be able to do that and accommodate that, yes.
Is this Sampson G.'s further along in the process of approval by the state? Or is that going to be on the referendum also?
I'm going to let Scott answer that. Sampson G. is with the same time schedule as the other projects.
Oh, the only reason I ask is because you haven't had a civil engineer for the other additions, but you have one for this. I thought this might be moving faster.
No, we had been working with a civil engineer on the new school, which I know is following another route through the town, and so they had taken a look at Sampson G. as well as part of that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board on this? Okay. Go ahead with the, must be the last item, which is the new.
Yes, in the new school, actually, I can take this, this is mobile. Yeah, the new school, which we know is through a different board at this point, is being proposed for the Clermont site, and that's a board-owned property off of Clermont Road, proposing a new two-story building. I don't believe that we were really prepared to talk about any of the specific comments. I don't know the comments issued through this board for that property at this point, but I know that there is a separate process we're going through relative to the zoning and the use of that site for the school. I believe there is a meeting set either later this month or next month.
Yeah, we don't have any comments in our packets about it.
Is that a two-story addition also? A two-story building?
Yes, it is.
I couldn't find the elevator. I mean, I looked at the floor plans until I was going crazy, and I couldn't, I didn't know where the, where the heck's the elevator? I couldn't find it. Is there one on there?
There is, yes.
Where is it exactly? Just as a matter of curiosity.
Sure.
I really do look at this stuff, so I just asked.
No, that's fine. It is.
I was looking for something that said elevator, and I couldn't find it. I saw the staircases and the stairwells and all that.
Right. Now, we are programming an elevator right, as you come in the main lobby, right in this front hallway here.
Is it here now? Does it show it?
It's shown a little oversized at this point to accommodate for the shaft, because we're at such a schematic level.
Oh, I thought that was, I actually thought that was a mechanical shaft. Okay.
No, that's programmed in for.
That's where the elevator's going?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Just to add to that for clarification purposes, that application would be going to the zoning board. It will be submitted early June, actually, early May for a June date. I believe that we've been in discussions with the Board of Ed and with Mr. Doniak about some of the in particulars that we have to be able to submit to the board for, for instance, such as traffic, which will be an issue with this. We are doing a traffic study.
Okay. Okay. No other comments from the board? Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so what we have to do as a board today is just make a motion that what they have presented is consistent with the master plan, and that's it.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
One second.
Mr. La Court.
Yes.
Mr. Mettler.
Yes.
Mr. Pettit.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Onyaka.
Yes.
Chairman Thomas. And for the record, Mr. Onyaka came in at 7:36.
And yes, for me. Okay, so, thank you very much, and the update. Okay, the next item is to be a discussion item, relief of conditions, Richard Rubin, PLN 08-00004. This is a subdivision approved back in 2008 that they're coming in for, to discuss the relief of.
You can sit at the table. You don't have to stand.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, just use one of those mics and sit at the table. It'd be comfortable.
The relevant memo in your packet is from Scott Thomas, our senior engineer.
Oh, I don't think it's on.
You just got us up.
Bottom. No, on the bottom, we're going to see it, yeah.
There's two little switches, yeah.
I probably won't even know how to figure it out.
Yeah, there it goes.
There you go. An attorney, not an engineer.
Gentlemen of the board, I'm Fred Dubowski. I'm a lawyer. I represent Tyler Homes. They didn't make the application for a minor subdivision. They didn't know about this property back in 2008. To my left is Zude Karajozzi.
You got to put the mic real close. Yeah, just like that, we can't, yeah.
To my left is Zude Karajozzi. He speaks for Tyler Homes. In the back, we have Joe, who's the fellow in the field, and next to him is Angela, who works in the office. I only came to represent them a few months ago for the purposes of presenting deeds to the planning board attorney, township attorney, and to the engineer, so that we could get the deeds signed to perfect that subdivision back in 2008. And having gotten the paperwork approved by the professionals, I believe, Mr. Murphy, you're okay with the deeds as I sent them to you?
I'm Jim Bryce.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's misleading a little bit. The deeds, yeah, I think that the deeds themselves were fine, subject to the municipal engineer's confirmation of the needs and bends, but the form, I think, was finally settled as to the deeds.
So that was my job, and that's what I was doing. And having gotten it done, I brought in Mr. Schrin, who got the subdivision, to sign the deeds, and he says, well, I don't have to sign the preservation easement. And that's kind of embarrassing from a client, because he built a house on one of the lots. It's finished. He's got people who want to move into the house, living in a motel. And the question to this board is, is it reasonable for him to build the house based on his due diligence? Now, before he built the house on a lot he didn't own until he got the subdivision done, he checked various things. He checked the resolutions, and he checked the ordinances of the town. I have copies of the applicable resolutions and ordinances to pass amongst the board that might be helpful, because your engineer addresses those elements of that ordinance and the resolution as well. And so I have a copy for everyone who, hopefully, I have enough, but I'm sure we have enough, I think. Now, when I brought Mr. Schrin in to sign the deed so we could deliver the house, and he refused to sign it, not knowing anything of the background, I was prepared, and I have to, I have to sue him, because I have a contract with Mr. Schrin, who promises that he's giving us a subdivision, and our lot is one that's been approved. And the only reason it isn't approved is because he won't sign one of the documents I prepared, wrote, not knowing, not caring. You could have an easement, you could take his whole land away. Well, our property, the one that he bought, is unaffected by any easements, has nothing to do with preservation easements, it's no wetlands, nothing on it. The issues with regard to preservation easement and the deed that creates it that we want him to sign is all affecting the farmer's land. Mr. Schrin is a farmer and continues to farm the property. But I listened to him, and I'm concerned if I sue him, he'll win. I mean, not, he won't win against me, he has to give me the subdivision, but I think he's right. I don't think he has to sign the preservation easement for a lot of reasons. And those reasons, I think, can be explored by going through the documents that I gave you, which is the resolution. If you read your engineer's report, he'll say that there's nothing in this resolution that requires Mr. Schrin to give a preservation easement. However, I spoke to your professionals, the engineers, and he says, yes, that's true, there's nothing in there that says you have to give a preservation easement, but we have ordinances that would require it. And the ordinances that are addressed by your engineer in his report, I've attached to what I've given and hopefully circulated amongst you guys. Now, I'm not an engineer. Engineers read things differently than lawyers and judges, and you got your help from your lawyer, too. I have an engineer here to explain it engineering-wise, but first of all, he is a farmer, and as a farmer, the farm board is where he's got to go in order to be giving any easements to anybody. What you'll see is that, from our engineer.
Wait, 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 that's just not true. I mean, we take easements for wetlands and boundaries all over the township in hundreds of instances for decades. That's just, that's just not true, that the only one you can give easements is to the agricultural board.
No, no. What I'm saying is that if you want to force him to do, you want to sue him, because he's noxious fumes or whatever you want to do, have taken the farm.
Oh, no, yeah, but that's completely different.
Oh, that's what I was saying. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, that we know. Any complaints, go to the board.
Oh, yeah.
That's crystal clear.
Okay, so that's what I was saying. Number two, I looked at the three sections of your ordinance, which is, the way you start logically, at least the way I would read it, you would start with Section 112-4, because that's the first section that's available. And that one defines a preservation area. Now, that says, a preservation area shall be open spaces set aside. Now, after the word "set aside," every conceivable piece of ground with trees on it, cliffs on it, this and that, is covered. So the operating language is that a preservation area has to be set aside. Well, how do you set aside a preservation area? You don't do it by, you have to have a resolution. The board has to consider it and say, the planning board. The planning board, when considering Mr. Schrin's application, could have made a resolution saying, we want a preservation easement, but they didn't. I assume that the board subsequently, as it affects his land, because it doesn't affect my client's land whatsoever. One of the arguments we're suggesting is that, let us get title to our two lots, sign up our deeds, and we'll tell them, when Mr. Schrin wants to develop his property at a later date, then you can talk about preservation easements with him, and you can make a setting aside by a resolution. So there's never been a resolution setting aside his property as a preservation easement. Number two, if it is a preservation area, then you got to put markers down, and the engineer will talk about what the markers do to this farmer's ability to farm. But the most important thing is the last section, which is 112-226, says that the requirements of this article, which is the preservation easement and the markers, does not apply to that portion where there's wetlands, because the DEP is in charge of those areas. So the, your ordinance is saying, one, you have to designate a preservation area, two, you have to put markers after it's designated, but three, if the designation is solely for wetlands, it doesn't apply. And it can't apply, because the DEP applies. So he's, it sounds like he's right as a.
But wait, I have a question then.
Yes.
So that's all well and good, that the DEP standard supersedes the township standard when it comes to wetlands. That's clear. However, if there's no markers, how do you know where those boundaries are?
Well, I mean, our ordinance, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to jump in, but it would seem to think what you're putting forth is a legal argument different than what our engineer, and I would think, it's up to the chairman, but I would think that if there's a legal thing, that maybe the two attorneys should talk offline and work this out, because I don't think the board, typically, the board doesn't get into legal discussions, and it seems to be that's where you're going, that you're saying that you don't believe that legally they should have to do it, and our engineer is saying that we have an ordinance that requires it, and I would think Jim needs an opportunity to look at everything and have a discussion with you, and if he agrees with you, he agrees with you. If not, if not, then I just, typically, we don't have these, I know where you're going, but the board typically will not take an action unless the attorney has given his opinion. I think the attorney is going to need time to review all the pertinent facts. Am I correct, Jim?
Yeah, and Mr., if I can put this on, Mr. Dubowski, here's the situation that I see coming before the board, is that you had a variance-free, or at least your client's predecessor, for lack of a better word.
And not even our predecessor.
The property owner had a variance-free minor subdivision that approved so many lots, and at this point in time, there is no condition in the resolution that this board can give relief from, because that is not a condition of approval.
True.
That is, at least as far as the municipal engineer is concerned, an issue of the land development ordinance. Now, enforcement of that ordinance isn't this board's jurisdiction. The engineer's saying they're requiring that. We have no condition to relieve you from. It is a legal determination, of course, that can be basically determined by the zoning board, whether or not that particular land development ordinance is applicable to this minor subdivision, because it's an interpretation of an ordinance which the planning board doesn't generally have jurisdiction over.
See, there's no variance. It was a clean application, and there was no variance granted.
That's right. Now, let's say that the zoning officer, it goes through the zoning officer, and there's a determination that that ordinance does apply.
Well, if the zoning officer says that you need, I deny you a building permit, then you got to go to the Board of Adjustment for variance.
That's my point. It's a messy jurisdictional issue for this board right now, because there's no relief of a condition that's in a resolution.
Could we do this? Perhaps we could.
And let me just finish my thought. If, let's say, it is determined that that particular ordinance is applicable, that would put it in a variance posture. Now, we might have jurisdiction over that later on if a variance was applied for, for that purpose, but I think that it has to go through. I don't think that this board basically can shortcut the process and make a legal determination that may be properly divested in the zoning board of adjustment, if it gets to that level.
The position I'm taking is that we do not need a waiver. We need to be able to have the deed signed, because that's what your ordinances require. So you don't go for a variance, because I'm saying I don't need a variance.
Well, I think what Jim is saying that.
I need to sit with an attorney and look at the law, and I have an engineer here who will show that the preservation issue only comes into play, and we have our zoning officer here, when you have so many acres, and I have my engineer here to explain that to the board and say that, no matter what you say in these various documents, he doesn't have enough land where you could even create a preservation easement by designation. The point is that, in order to create a preservation easement, there has to be a designation. There is no designation of a preservation easement by any board. It's a legal question. It's a legal question, maybe for the township attorney, maybe for the planning board attorney, maybe for the Board of Adjustment, but what the zoning. maybe for the Board of Adjustment, but what the zoning officer is saying, he's right. Vincent Dominic is saying that, hey, guys, this is a legal question, what are you messing with my board for and telling them to make legal decisions when it's something that the lawyers should decide? The only question we have is which of the lawyers are going to decide it? And it's either you and me, is the zoning board attorney and me, or is the township attorney and me?
But it's not this board.
It may not be. It may not be.
It's not. We were just told it's not, and it's not.
There's one aspect of it that our engineer could present that might well be within your jurisdiction as well.
Yeah, but we didn't, it wasn't a condition of your approval. You're looking for a relief of a condition.
We are taking the position that we don't need relief. We never were required to do it. I don't know where else to go.
Then it's a legal decision beyond our, are we supposed to judge that for you, legally?
Yeah, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, is that it's not part of the resolution, it's an ordinance requirement. So if it's an ordinance requirement, it's either, depending on what our zoning board attorney and our township attorney say, it's either something for the zoning board to consider, or it's something for our township attorney to consider whether or not it applies. Because this board, this board can't make a determination as to whether that ordinance, you know, if this board had said, well, you got to, you got to put, you know, a path there, and you were asking for relief, they could relieve that. But they can't relieve a township ordinance, because they didn't require you to do it. The ordinance did. So this board can't relieve it.
Or it didn't, that's my point.
Yeah, and I think that an interpretation of an ordinance and its requirements is properly before a zoning board of adjustment, and not the planning board.
Well, I'm going to get the same thing in front of the zoning board that I'm getting here, saying, hey, guys, what are you asking my board to make legal-
They're legally charged with making that determine, a legal determination, as to the requirements of a zoning ordinance. And if I understand this correctly, this particular ordinance at issue is in the land development section?
Yes.
Yes, it's in 112.
Okay, so the zoning board would be the appropriate body to actually hear whether or not this ordinance is applicable to this particular minor subdivision.
It's no different than if Vince made a ruling against somebody about some case, and they want to appeal that, because it's in an ordinance, they've got to go to the Board of Adjustment.
I couldn't agree with you more. The only thing is, he didn't make such a ruling.
Pardon?
He didn't make such a ruling. And if you send me to the zoning board, the same board that I have here, we're saying, wait a second, stop making legal questions, the zoning board is going to say, wait a second, we don't want to hear it, it's a legal question.
What, no, what I would suggest is that you, I have not been formally asked to make a determination. You know, you haven't, you haven't said to me, "You decide, as a zoning officer, whether 11247 applies." I think you should, based on what Jim says, you should ask me in writing to do that, and then I have to respond to you in writing, and if I agree with you, then it's fine. If I don't agree with you, then you can take an appeal to the zoning board of my decision. That's what Jim is saying.
And in interim, I would suggest, because I'm not sure what Mr. Schrin's issue is with the conservation easement in particular, but perhaps there could be a modification made that would preserve all farming rights within the conservation easement, and recognizing the right to farm act does apply, there is certain rights that do attach to a farm, and without getting into a lot of jurisdictional niceties about it, perhaps there could be a modification made to the conservation easement that would both satisfy Mr. Schrin and the municipal engineer.
Could we just, I agree with you wholeheartedly, both of you. While he's here, since I have my engineer here, and since you're here, let him go to the board and describe some of the engineering issues briefly, as to whether or not the farming would work or not.
No, because it's not before this board.
It's not really appropriate for this board to determine that at this point in time.
Okay.
And not to, believe me, I'm not trying to be an obstructionist here by any stretch of the imagination, I just have to be cognizant of this board's jurisdiction versus the jurisdiction, and not arrogating jurisdiction from both the zoning officer and the zoning board of adjustment, and dealing with this issue. Because if there was a, if there was a condition in this approval, and it was spilled out, you would be appropriately, you would be appropriately here, but that isn't a condition. There's nothing that this board can do for you, is what I'm saying. Aside from just review the deeds that were given to the attorneys and saying, yep, they're good to sign. That's, after the approval, that's what the board's jurisdiction really is at that juncture.
You don't have to hit me over the head, I agree.
Not trying.
But nice to meet you all. Anyway, I'm going to present it to Vince.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, with that, we have one hearing tonight, which is Renew and Rema, that was carried from April the 3rd to today, so Renew and Rema Enterprise LLC, PLN 12-00013.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. Before I start this application, Mr. Chairman, there was another matter on the agenda. Was that carried?
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to confirm, okay.
Carried to June 5th, further notification required.
Melmed.
Fine.
Melmed.
I do represent them, I just wanted to make sure it was done, because I was not in the room.
I assumed it was, yeah.
Hey, Vince, do we know what the deadline for decision for Melmed?
I think you're good, but if you need an extension of time, Mr. Healy, I will gladly send a letter tomorrow granting the extension of time through the end of June.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as you indicated, this matter was carried from two weeks ago, since the matter that was on before the board two weeks ago took a little bit longer than we had anticipated. So we're here this evening. This is an application for a site plan approval for property located on Route 27, south of Pleasant Plains Road. It is known as Block 34.01, Lot 32.01. The street address is 3059 Route 27. At the present time, the subject property is vacant, there are remnants of a demolished building on the property, and the application this evening is to construct a 6,796 square foot, one-story retail building. There is actually a second floor, which will be used for storage only and not occupancy, but it is a single-story building. Again, by way of history, I have my site engineer here and my traffic consultant here this evening. I do not have my architect here this evening, however.
You've got a temporary license to practice, right?
Excuse me?
You've got a temporary license to practice.
Mr. Healy is going to discuss, present the architectural testimony now. Let me just briefly indicate the situation. We appeared before the Historic Commission some years ago. This project has taken a long time to get here. When we made the presentation before the Historic Commission, we provided testimony by Mr. Folger, Folger, who is the engineer, and Mr. Duran was also at the meeting. There were some, there were, a presentation made, and we were asked to come back. We did return to the commission with some product samples, which indicated that the proposed building would be vinyl cladded with six-inch boards and 45-degree angles that have a closer appearance to wooden clapboards than typical vinyl siding. There were also other requests by the Historic Commission that the windows facing Route 27 be modified, and there was an approval granted by the Historic Commission concerning the building that indicated that they approved the building with a water table of red brick, deciding to be of muted color, and the roof have Highland slate simulated shingles of Tudor brown or similar colors, and there was also a determination that certain dormers not be higher than the crest of the roof and have a gable. We revised the plans, we submitted them to the planning board as part of this application. Most of those items were incorporated in the architectural plans, some of them were not. We have had actually a couple meetings with the architect, and Mr. Dominic, and Mr. Healy, and the architectural plans that are currently before the board, in essence, have incorporated all of the comments that were raised by the Historic Commission. There are a couple minor changes that still need to be made based on discussions that I had with Mr. Healy. There's some notations in the plan, but in essence, the building, as is presented in the architectural plans, which are part of your package, now are consistent with the plans that were approved by the Historic Commission. The building will consist of the earth tone colors, and all of the recommendations that were made by the Historic Commission, we will incorporate in those plans. So, that is one of the reasons I didn't bring the architect this evening, because basically I think we've gotten to the point where we've got the building where it should be, and I don't know if you want to ask Mr. Healy, or if Mr. Healy wants to confirm the long-sorted history of the getting to where we are this evening with the architectural plans.
No, I think you summarized it accurately. There was a lot of back and forth, both with, on the applicant's side and staff, and then also you went to the Historic Commission a number of times. And I do, I do have some comments on the architected, but I think they're basically detail-oriented.
Right, and I, as we go through the staff reports, I review those with my client, and we can, I think, discuss your comments.
Do you have some exhibits for the board to see?
Basically, as part of your package, we do, you know, you have the architectural renderings. The only thing that the architect did give me in addition was basically small, a small cutout drawing of what the building would look like from Route 27, and so I will mark that as A1 and pass it out to the board members.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bob.
Yeah, I think in the comments that I read, there was a request for a colored architectural rendering of the building.
I do have a small version of the- I do have a small version of the architectural renderings that was provided to me by the architect. Do I have a full board rendering? No, I do not, but I do have a rendering that was actually submitted to the Historic Commission, and it was reduced to these, to these sheets of paper, which are flying all over the place.
But the floor plans and the architected have been on file and in our office for probably a number of months now, and they were included and distributed to the board in the packet.
I do have that, but I have nothing in color.
So this is A1?
A1.
At this juncture, I would like to call as my first witness, Mr. Duran, and I'm going to, while he's being sworn in, mark his exhibit as A2.
Yes, Bob.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lanford, comparing these drawings with this, I noticed the dormers are different.
The-
Dormers are different.
The latest version of the dormers were the ones that were requested by-
Well, yeah, I think, this is, I'll, I'll be, I'll be kind here. The plans that are, the elevations, that's the latest. The dormers with the peaked roof, that's what the Historic Commission recommended in favor of the flattened-
The gambrel type.
Yeah, that was not, and I think, I would just consider the colored version kind of representative in terms of color and scale. This is not, this is not accurate, so what's actually proposed is what's on here.
Okay.
On the drawing itself.
On the drawing itself.
Okay.
Mr. Duran, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thanks. Please state your full name for the record.
Daniel Doran.
Mr. Doran, can you indicate to the board your occupation?
I'm a licensed engineer, land surveyor, and planner here in the state of New Jersey. I've been a member of the firm of William Doran and Sons for the past 30 years. I've previously testified in front of this board and boards similar to yours throughout the state.
Is accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Doran, you prepared the site plan, which is the subject of this application?
Yes, I have.
Okay, first of all, can you tell the board what the existing conditions are on the subject property?
Yes, the site is 0.87 acres in size, and as Mr. Lanford had stated, the site is going to be redeveloped, it has an existing asphalt parking area on it. In the rear of the property, there's an existing stone and a mixture of asphalt still remaining on the property. There's a number of deciduous trees around the perimeter of the property, and a number of them have been designated as to remain on the site. When you look at the exhibit that we have, which is a highlighted version of the landscaping plan that was submitted with the application, on the right-hand side is Route 27. North is to the left of the page, and there is an existing wood fence along the easterly and northerly property lines of the property. This is a six-foot-high wood stockade fence.
Mr. Duran, with respect to those fences, do you know whether they are on our property or whether those fences belong to the adjoining property owner?
The one on the east side is on the adjoining property, the one on the north side is located on our property, yes.
Okay.
There is also, where you see along the easterly property line, there is a small cutout, there's an existing block or stone retaining wall along that easterly property line, and then it goes in a further easterly direction towards the property corner itself. There is existing municipal water and sanitary sewer located in the right-of-way of Route 27 and is currently servicing the site.
Okay. Now, this application, as I indicated in my opening remarks, is to construct a 6,796 square foot retail building, is that correct?
Yes, it is, and that's what we have highlighted in brown, which is located in the southwesterly corner of the property.
Okay, with respect to the proposed plan, can you take the board through how the site is being proposed to be developed, starting on Route 27 and working your way around the site?
Certainly. In accordance with the DOT standards, a new driveway will be constructed, providing access to Route 27, and then also to the proposed parking, which will be located on the easterly portion of the site, and then north of the building. Both the parking area and the driveway meets the standards as required through the township. Based on the proposed use and the size of the building, 34 parking spaces are required and supplied. The areas that we have highlighted in yellow are concrete walks, which go around the building, and there's also going to be a concrete walk along Route 27. The entire driveway and parking area will be enclosed with concrete curbing. This paved area on the north side of the building is a loading area. The main entrances into the retail stores will be along the east side of the building, and the deliveries will be to the west side or the rear of the building. At the terminus, the westerly terminus of that loading area, there'll be a enclosed trash enclosure that will be a minimum of 10 feet away from the building, will be enclosed with a six-foot-high stockade fence and landscaping.
Let me stop you there for a quick second, Mr. Duran. That dumpster is not in the location that it was originally when we submitted our plans, is that correct?
That's correct. It was originally in this area here where we had designated two spots for employees. We were asked to relocate it to get the parking spots not to be located in front of the dumpster.
So we now have relocated the dumpster at the end of the loading area, and we have maintained the two parking spots that we originally had on our plan, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And as a result of that, we are providing 34 parking spaces on the site?
Correct.
And that is the ordinance requirement, 34 parking spaces, correct?
Yes, it is.
And we are not seeking any variance for the parking spaces?
That's correct.
Okay.
How far is the dumpster from the building?
It'll be a minimum of 10 feet.
Okay, thank you.
Continue, Mr. Duran.
The entire driveway and parking area will have light fixtures installed, and it will be illuminated in accordance with the township standards. Those light fixtures- Those light fixtures will be 12 feet high, and they'll be on a timer, which will have the lights turn off an hour after closing. The applicant has also agreed to have scheduled pickups for the trash removal at times that do not occur in the middle of the night, so people living in the area do not have to deal with that pickup of the trash at that time. The site will be landscaped with a variety of deciduous and evergreens trees and shrubs that will benefit the aesthetic value of the property and also add to the buffering. As far as drainage is concerned, the existing drainage pattern of the site will not be altered by the proposed improvements. A small portion of the site does drain towards Route 27, but a majority of it drains towards the northwesterly corner of the property, and that will not be altered. The applicant will be constructing an underground detention system. It'll be located basically in this back parking area, underneath that back parking area, and it will meet all the stormwater requirements of the stormwater ordinance.
And the addition of that stormwater system, originally, we had not proposed a stormwater management system. There was, and we'll review the engineering reports later, but there was a request by the Assistant Township Engineer to develop a stormwater management system, and we are agreeable to doing that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Pete, I just want to check on the, is there going to be an enclosure for the dumpster? Is it going to be a concrete wall? Because if it is the concrete wall and not just a fence, it becomes a structure, and you may need a variance for that.
We have it as a fence, a six-foot-high stockade fence, and then landscaping.
Oh, for the dumpster enclosure, okay, so there's no con-
Correct.
I just want to make sure that you don't go to build it and they have to come back. I'm not going to let you build it because it's a concrete wall.
No.
Okay.
Excuse me, is the dumpster where the employee parking is?
No, it's not. That was what we were just speaking about. That was-
We relocated originally.
He's going to show you on the-
It was originally right here, and that's probably what you're looking at on your plans. It's now at the westerly terminus of the loading area.
Oh, where this, where this, okay. And did you say you were going to load the stores from the back, from the west?
That's correct. This will be the loading area here, and deliveries will be brought along that walkway and have rear entrance.
No cars back there, no trucks?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Just sidewalk carry.
Okay. All right. Mr. Duran, are we proposing any new fencing around the property?
Not at this point in time, no.
Excuse me, briefly, the site plan, I just have one last question.
Sure.
Down in the front, we have your entrance driveway. It says something here, but newly constructed curb by the owner of Lot 31. What is that?
That, we're just designating what it was so that everybody would understand.
I don't understand. What is it?
It's a curb. It's just, from the end, I'll call it from the southerly end of the retaining wall that was recently constructed.
Right, I see that.
A concrete curb was brought from that on a radius over towards their driveway.
You know why it was done? It seemed-
No.
Is there a driveway there?
There's no driveway there, no. There's an existing driveway for the doctor's office, which was east of the end of that curb.
Okay. It was confusing us. I saw the retaining wall, and I see this-
We just wanted to explain on the plan what it was.
That was funny.
Okay.
You still haven't explained it, but it's okay. I see you wanted to show it.
All right. What is, would you make a comment about landscaping on what would be the rear of your building, but really is one that's facing the property next to you?
The, I don't know, let me see what's- We are proposing to have a variety of hollies along that side and also viburnums.
Again, for the record, what, who is your neighbor?
That is a abandoned dwelling. It has been abandoned for a number of years, that lot to the west of us. I believe it was the Varga.
Aren't considering continuing the stockade fence?
Abutting the property, as you're facing the prop, our site to the left of us?
Yes.
There is a approved, I believe, commercial development on that site.
Yeah, it's in the, I think it was a stereo store.
Yeah, that's correct.
Similar-type site layout to this.
So, yeah, we're not proposing a fence abutting another commercial use or future commercial use?
One other clarification, where we talked about that funny-looking curb, you have a sidewalk piece with a ramp that looks like it butts right into that curb. Is there a sidewalk beyond there connecting up to existing sidewalk?
Mr. Pettit, the, we can certainly, and it was requested, to move our proposed sidewalk along Route 27 closer to the 27 curb line and within the right-of-way of Route 27. At our property line, there is no sidewalk. On the east side of the existing driveway on Lot Number 31, there is an existing curb, I mean, an existing sidewalk that abuts the curb, so it's right out on Route 27. I'd prefer not to do that. I'd prefer to keep whatever, about three or four feet off of the curb line, and then to put that curb that we're proposing along our frontage, you know, so somewhere around four feet off of the existing curb.
The sidewalk that we're looking at on the plan is going to be moved toward the right-of-way of the highway?
That's correct.
Line up where-
Yes.
-into that curb wall, or by the other guy, whatever that is.
That's correct.
Sorry, so it will line up with the other sidewalk?
It'll be close to it, yes. The other side, the sidewalk, the sidewalk is on the east side of the driveway, and it is right up along the curb line.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I'd prefer not to put it right up on-
Then you can go down off your sidewalk, cross the driveway, and then pick up the other sidewalk.
Correct, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Duran, have you had an opportunity to review the staff reports that were generated in conjunction with this application?
Yes, I have.
Let's spend a few minutes going over them very quickly. First of all, we have a staff report from Mr. Dominack, who indicated that we had 34, or 34 parking spaces are required and 32 were proposed. He was assuming we were taking out two parking spaces. We are not. We're going to keep the 34 parking spaces, thus we do not need a parking variance.
Which are the two, oh, that's because you moved the dumpster.
We moved the dumpster.
Okay, all right. Those are staying because you moved the dumpster, okay.
Correct. So there is no variance with respect to that, correct, Mr. Duran?
Correct.
There is a lot frontage variance, and that lot frontage variance is an existing condition. The lot is 90 feet wide, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And the lot on the others, on either side of us, either proposed to be developed or is developed, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. We did get a fire report from Mr. House, asking for two, two things, and we're going to comply with that report.
Yes.
Dealing with the report of Mr. Houck dated February 13, 2013, there are 24 comments. First of all, just dealing with item number six, which is a question, that is, will the existing decorative light within Route 27 right-of-way, will that be removed? First of all, can you indicate to the board where that light is?
It's within the right-of-way of Route 27, and it's approximately right here. It is a decorative light. If we can install the walkway, that we're going to move closer to Route 27 and alleviate that light, we'll certainly try to do that. If the light can stay, that'll be fine. If it has to be removed, we could certainly remove it.
Okay. And that light was there in conjunction with the previous building?
That's correct.
Okay, and if we can maintain it, we'd like to keep it?
Yes.
Okay, and obviously, part of this application has to go to DOT, as we will hear from our traffic consultant, and if it's in the state right-of-way and if DOT requires us to take it out, it's going to go anyway.
That's correct.
Okay. Other than that, all of the other comments, we can and will comply with, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Healy prepared a report dated March, I'm sorry, February 5, 2013. Concerning the site layout, I think we've addressed the issue of the employee parking in the dumpster, so I'm not going to waste any time talking about that. The access drive and the proposal of why it's located where it is, I'll have our traffic consultant deal with that issue when he testifies. Items six through 15 deal with basically landscaping, and he, Mr. Healy, has indicated that we should consider certain other species of trees and-
That's not a problem.
And we'll meet with Mr. Healy and revise the landscape plan to his satisfaction. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can you respond to Mr. Healy's question on item number 16, on the back shields?
We'll provide that detail. I believe that it will be a fixture added to the light itself to prevent any spillage of light onto any of the adjoining properties. And these are for the light fixtures that are located either on the easterly or westerly boundaries of the property.
And just a quick question on the landscaping. I know you indicated you comply, but just to clarify with number six, you do understand that anything you provide on site counts towards that, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so anything that you had proposed that doesn't meet that total of 22, you're going to add to bring into compliance, right?
Yeah, we're either going to have the number of trees that are required or not, yeah, we'll have to-
I believe we exceed that.
Okay.
Okay. With respect to the light on the landscape island, again, can you clarify for Mr. Healy as to whether this is, in fact, a double fixture?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And we'll note that on the plan.
Okay. Going back to the architectuals, then, for the record, item number 18, the second floor is not habitable space, it is there for storage only. I will make sure that the architect, when he submits the revised architectural plans, will include that note. We will also revise the plans to deal with items 19, 20, and, which deal with the signs and the illumination. I think Mr. Healy and I have had that discussion already, but we'll make sure that the architect revises the plans to include those items.
And just to clarify, with regard to the second floor, the applicant wouldn't be able to use that for commercial use even if they wanted to, because the parking is based on the square footage of the first floor, so-
That is correct.
It is, if it's going to be used for anything, it'd be for storage, storage only, and they'd be in violation of, they'd have zoning violation if they were to use it for any other purpose.
It's also not big enough to qualify as a floor, it could be an attic.
And I, and both, I know, both, and both in my report and Carl's report, we basically asked them to clarify that, show the floor plans and clarify that.
But it's also in the building code.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And I think that deals with the, Mr. Healy's report. We have a report from Mr. Chi, and we will have a properly sealed stormwater management report. Sewer indicates there is sewer capacity, and I think based on the parking in front of the trash enclosure, I'm looking at Patty Elliott's report dated February 6. We will make sure that we size the dumpster to handle all of the retail space, is that correct, Mr. Duran?
That's correct. It's not only the size, but it's the number of pickups also, and that will be dependent upon the owner, making sure that the 10-by-10 enclosure that we have can handle the debris that is stored there and picked up properly.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions of this witness.
Board, have any more questions for this?
Just with regard to the Environmental Commission's report, the one comment was cutoff lighting, which you are providing, that's on the plans.
I didn't, nobody provided me with the Environmental Commission report.
Okay, then I'll read them to you. Well, the cutoff lighting you've addressed.
Correct.
They're asking that the parking lot consists of semi-pervius surface. Can you address that in some way?
I'd prefer not to. I mean, there are times where people promote the semi-pervius pavement. In this area here, though, that is salted, and at times you get a freeze and thaw of the pavement. I'm just not a big advocate of that in our area. We have the ability to design an underground detention system that will handle the stormwater It's nice to have pervious pavement in areas where you don't have the weather conditions that we have up here, and over time, I think you're going to see that those surfaces, just due to the way that they're maintained and the salt being added to it, fail in their permeability.
You're going to provide a stormwater basin or detention facility that meets the stormwater rules?
That's correct.
And the site complies with the impervious requirements?
That's correct.
Percentage. And then the last requirement, and again, I think you comply with this, they're asking that the parking lot, that the rear, and I guess the rear is the portion that abuts residential homes, be screened in a way that would reduce headlight glare, but there's an existing fence, and then you're providing additional-
We have landscaping, that's correct.
Evergreen trees in the back.
We have a dense evergreen row and deciduous trees in that area.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Open this window up to the public or wait? We could do it either way.
No, go ahead with your next question.
Okay. Mr. Kennel?
Just raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your full name for the record.
Scott, Scott Kennel.
I'm with McDonough and Ray Associates, located at 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquon.
And, Mr. Kennel, can you give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Yes, I'm an associate with McDonough and Ray Associates. I have over 30 years of traffic and transportation planning experience. I've appeared, probably been 10 years now since I appeared before this board. I appeared before the zoning board two weeks ago. But I've prepared over 500 traffic impact studies, I've appeared in over 100 municipalities, been qualified, but, okay, thank you.
All right. Mr. Kennel, you were retained by the applicant to prepare a traffic analysis in conjunction with this application?
That's correct. And what we prepared was a traffic statement that dealt with existing conditions, reviewed historical traffic data along Route 27, and also reviewed the site as it pertains to NJDOT access criteria. Given the fact that we are modifying the access and access, it will require a new NJDOT major access permit, I reviewed this site, and what's important to recognize, given the limited frontage, according to NJDOT criteria, there is a trip limit that could be considered for this property. Given the posted speed limit along Route 27 in this area, you need 185 feet from the midpoint of the subject property to the midpoint of the adjoining properties, east and west, which we do not have here, so therefore, it's considered a non-conforming lot, which limits the trip generation to approximately 100 trips. And with that-
And non-traffic consultants speak, what does that mean?
That means that based on, in order to comply with the state highway access code, the type of use that is proposed on here is limited by the amount of trip generation. For example, you could not provide a convenience store, which has a high traffic generation, but you could provide other retail uses which have trip generation that generate less than what is permitted based on a DOT criteria.
Okay, so, jumping-
Pete, can I just ask a question? Does that mean that the board is going to have to limit the type of things that can be there based on the DOT regulations?
That's correct. One of the uses that we had identified in our report was specialty retail, and if, and the way the building is set up, it can accommodate up to three tenants. With NJDOT approval, there will be a deed restriction that limits that to specialty retail, so you cannot have a high-traffic generator on this property.
It's just important from our perspective, because we're going to need to know that when we get to change a tenant, to know whether or not, because from a zoning perspective, any type of retail is allowed, so we're going to have to, that's going to have to be delineated very specifically, so that we don't want to get in trouble from DOT by approving- that we don't want to get in trouble from DOT by approving the wrong type of, you know, retail.
I, I don't think it's a question of approving the wrong type of retail, Mr. Dominic. I, I think what DOT, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Kennel, is that they restrict the number of trips that can be generated from this site to a hundred trips. Is that correct?
A hundred peak hour trips.
Trips.
Correct.
So that, that in reality, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, if I wanted to put a use in there in two thousand square feet of the six thousand square foot building that generates a hundred trips, I could put that use in there, but the, the rest of the building cannot be used.
Yeah, I think my question is going to be is how, how are we going to enforce that? We, we need to talk, I mean, that, that's really important because I don't want to be in violation of this trip generation that the, you need to come up with some mechanism for this planning and zoning to be able to enforce that. How do we look at it every time they get a new tenant? They're going to have to get a traffic generation report from you or someone else for, I, I don't know the answer. I'm just-
Well, again, the, the DOT definition for specialty retail is very specific, so obviously I would think that would be in the file. You'll have a copy of the access permit in the site plan, epic, site plan file, and that's initially could be the, the quick review. So, you know, it doesn't allow convenience stores or post offices to drive through, fast food type restaurant are the type of uses that are prohibited under DOT's definition of specialty retail.
Are they listed in that, in that criteria? Are they listed?
Yes, they are, and we can provide that to the board so that it's in your file, in your file.
Can you, can you just give us an example of what they would be rather than doctor's office, a dentist's office, a whatever?
Oh, you could have a florist. You could have, it could be a dance studio. You could have a real estate office, low retail traffic generators. DOT recognizes that a convenience store has a high turnover as well as, say, a fast food restaurant. Post office is another one that has a high peak hour traffic generation.
Are beauty parcs permitted?
Yes, they are.
Rest, regular restaurants? Pizza?
Regular restaurants, quality restaurant, correct. That is permitted.
Okay.
And again, I can provide that definition-
Yeah, because we just need something. I, I want to stick it in the resolution and, and stick it on, you know, so that we, we have, we know what it is. That's all.
Well, yeah, I mean, one of the languages we could have is that, you know, the site will be limited to the one hundred and eight, or whatever it says in your report, one hundred, one hundred and eight trips per hour, and then, you know, you could follow that with a list of examples.
Per hour or per?
What does it mean?
Peak, per hour. Per hour.
Yeah.
Mr. Kennel, let me- It translates to fifty vehicles because usually this type of users in this building are entering and exiting within an hour.
Mr. Kennel, let me just ask you, how many uses are excluded? Just give me a number.
Uh, approximately four to five.
If you can give me those, I can just put that in as a condition that those uses will not be permitted. If that's a reasonable condition, Mr. Leffler.
Probably easier than listing all the ones that are.
That's exactly-
That's correct, and that's, it's included in their definition. I'll provide, provide the definition from the state highway access management code.
Thank you.
It would be good for you to have it anyway.
Yeah.
If you could give the zoning department a copy of the permitted ones for reference, because, you know, two years from now, ten years from now, who knows who's going to want to come in there and the neighbors are like, boy, you can't come in here.
Well, generally, they list the, the type of retailers that are not permitted. I mean, obviously, we could, the list could go on, and who knows what other type of, new type of retail use could be developed. In addition to that, I, with working with the NJDOT criteria, I worked with the site engineer as far as developing the access design. NJDOT has recommendations to have driveways offset from property corners, and as a result, that's, that's, we've realized a curvilinear alignment to the driveways approach Route twenty-seven. Generally, their criteria is they, they require a twelve-foot offset from the property corner. We're providing eight feet, but at the same time, they also require a minimum spacing of twenty-four feet between the driveways, and we will provide twenty-eight. So that's what's driving the design and the curvilinear alignment of, of the driveway that's shown on the site plan is to provide, meet their conditions for separation from adjoining driveways.
Okay, so the, the driveway to the property to the north of us is basically pretty close to our property line. Is that fairly accurate statement?
That's correct.
And, and so the driving force is that we have to move our driveway further away from that driveway to meet DOT's requirements.
As well as to be offset from the property corner, even if there wasn't a driveway there.
Correct. Okay, and then Mr. Healy, I think also in his report mentioned that perhaps we can stripe that driveway to delineate the inbound and outbound lanes. I, I assume that can be done and that-
We can comply.
Okay. Let me go back, continue with your testimony concerning what you did and, and also what your conclusions are with respect to this project.
All right, well, and again, in our traffic report, we identified other types of uses should retail not be provided that can be accommodated in a building and, and be in compliance with NJDOT criteria. And that included general office space as medical office space or a quality restaurant. As I understand, the prior use on this site, it was a five thousand square foot restaurant, which generate traffic, or based on DOT trip rates, would generate traffic greater than specialty retail. Specialty retail is expected to approximately forty-six to fifty peak hour trips, whereas a five thousand square foot restaurant would be in the range of sixty to seventy trips. So again, as the applicant's proposal is to have three retail tenants or up to three retail tenants, it'd be a less intensive traffic generation use than the prior restaurant use that was on the site a couple of years ago.
Okay. Did you also do an analysis of onsite parking and circulation?
Yes, as the engineer testified earlier, we're providing thirty-four parking spaces, which comply with the township ordinance of five parking spaces per one thousand square feet, and I feel that's adequate, that exceeds the recommended national standards that's published by the Urban Land Institute and the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So it's my opinion that there's adequate parking to support the proposed development, and the design of the parking lot is such that it can accommodate the smaller type delivery vehicles that would serve this size retail use. You would expect basically stray trucks or box trucks serving these type of retailers as well as the refuse vehicles. This site's been designed to accommodate those type of large wheel-based vehicles.
Thank you, Mr. Kennel. I have no further questions.
Just one quick question that should have been obvious to me, but I missed it. Is your driveway a full movement driveway?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so you, you know problems, you know, allowing left-hand turns onto twenty-seven going northbound on twenty-seven?
It's my recommendation that a full movement driveway be provided here. Obviously, during certain peak hour periods, left turns are difficult to make out of, to, to accommodate out of the site. However, there are other users or developments in this area of equal traffic generation that have full movements. Prohibiting the left turns, there are no U-turn facilities up and down Route twenty-seven, so that promotes unacceptable movements at other intersections or developments where people are making U-turns. So it's, it's my recommendation, and I've worked on a number of other projects on Route twenty-seven in North Brunswick, and it's a very, it's kind of self-regulated. If someone's, I would think that most of the patrons here are going to be, it's going to be service-oriented retailers, so they'll be regular customers, and either they plan their trip here during off peaks, or they plan their trips where they don't have to make a left turn out during those peak hour periods.
Yeah, I mean, if you were, if you were closer to Clermont Road than you are, you might be worried about queuing behind that light, but I think you're far enough away from Clermont that, and Pleasant Plains is not going to give you a problem there, so.
I would agree. I've made some observations out there, and I would agree with that.
Okay.
One, one question, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
You had indicated that the parking that our ordinance requires and that you're providing is greater than other published standards. Do you have an opinion on, maybe perhaps based on your own, your experience and your discussions with your client, whether less parking could be provided from a practical perspective and whether some of those spaces could be land-banked?
I would say that'd be a possibility if I knew what, who, who the tenants were, but the fact that it's speculative at this point, I think it's, it's prudent to provide it to five per thousand, given the, the size of this development. I mean, Urban Land Institute in both IT recommend parking at four to four point five per thousand. So if you were to comply with that, it's an elimination maybe of three or four parking spaces.
So it's just not worth it, basically?
I, I would, I mean, you know, if you're, if you're dealing with a, a development, say, a hundred thousand square foot shopping center where you have a larger parking field en masse, then I'd probably be advocating for a lower parking rate-
Mm-hmm.
-so that you could have more green area. But for something of this size, I think it's prudent.
Less room, less room for error, basically.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the board for this witness? Okay, seeing none, and this is your last witness, right?
That's my last witness, that's correct.
I'll make a motion to open to the public.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we open this application to its public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting is open to the public on this application. If you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record and be sworn in by our attorney.
My name's Keith Stensland.
You spelled the last name clear?
Sure. S.T.E.N.S.L.A.N.D.
Very good. Please raise your right hand. Swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, it is.
Very good. And you're also allowed to ask questions, you just don't have to give testimony.
Copy. I own the property that's at the north end, adjacent to it, on the back of the property, and I'm a little, I have some things to go over, but after the testimony of the drive, the traffic, obviously, he hasn't been out there, and I know if Theodore Chase was here, who lives along Route twenty-seven, realized the problems we have trying to get out on Pleasant Plains Road, because Pleasant Plains Road is a cut-through, an absolute cut-through. We've tried to get speed bumps on that thing, but because of the curves, we don't fall into the ability to do that. But Clermont has absolutely nothing to do with this, other than the people at Pleasant Plains trying to beat the light. So you didn't let IHOP do it, and now to let this property, I don't know what the distance is to Pleasant Plains Road, but to have people trying to make left when we on Pleasant Plains Road and my neighbors and people who cut through look for an opportunity to shoot across the road, well, the people coming out of this property are going to be looking for that same opportunity to go left. And it's mind-boggling. I just, Route twenty, Route twenty-seven is a mess. You go further down where you got a North Brunswick property and a property across the way, and both people are fighting to try and get out. I, there, there's absolutely no way this property should be allowed to make a left-hand turn. And for that matter, to let someone make a left when they're heading north, you know, we're trying to make a right out of there, we see an opening, we head, this guy heading north is looking at that property to go into and is not paying attention to us. So now all of a sudden, we're looking over our left shoulder, we see an opening, we head out, next thing you know, this guy's coming up north trying to make a left into this parking lot. Give me a break! I mean, I, I love to see people succeed, but, you know, when you've got a retail business, you also want traffic count. So I just ask you, board, for what you can control on twenty-seven, as you did with IHOP, you got to make it safe for the people on our side of the road. And that's not only me, it's all the blankety-blanks that cut through my, my street. It's not a, it's not, it's even hard to make a left out of Pleasant Plains Road. Now you're asking people to make a, try and make a left out of this shopping center? Please, take a look down there and just sit there in any one afternoon or any one morning, and you'll feel the pain that our neighbors feel. The other thing I wanted to talk about is this property is much elevated than the surrounding adjacent properties just from over years and built up. All of our properties sit below grade, and maybe Mr. Dorn could tell you exactly, but my property's at least three feet below the grade of this property, and I'm sure it's the same with my other neighbors. Chauncey, prior to us buying this property, did put up a fence at the request of, I guess, zoning. That fence has deteriorated. I've put it up a number of times. There's multiple dead trees on the back of this property that have taken it out, and because of no owner or access to owners, and I love using a chainsaw, we generally take the trees out so we could put our fence back up. But my fence back there, if it is on their property, definitely needs to be replaced because I've replaced parts on it, and if, according to what Mr. Dorn said, my fence is on their property, then I would ask that that be replaced. A six-foot fence is fine, even though it's only given me four-foot a buffer, but with the growth behind it, I'd love to look at the fence and then the growth above it, that would be acceptable to me. Some of my other neighbors will come up that I've helped when trees from this property have taken out their fences. It doesn't matter whose property it is on, but I think that ability for this development to go forward should consider the neighbors and should consider putting a fence up to all my adjacent neighbors. And with the trees along there, I, I think that would be, I think it would be a good, I suggest it. It needs it, and I think it would make the aesthetics of the neighborhood or the development look good instead of having a crappy stockade fence there with multiple different pieces than a complete stockade fence around the whole location with the plants in front of it, I think would make their property look better, and I think it would help my, my neighbors and my friends here swallow this a little bit better. That being said, this property's obviously not building a retention wall, so water from their property is going to disperse onto our properties.
They are building an underground detention basin.
Take a look at the slope of the property. Okay, I don't know what the setback is, but the curb is not going up to the property line, and it's a slope there. So they're, they're just short of putting a retention wall around this whole property.
Retention walls, I think you're mixing terms.
But you understand what I'm saying?
You're mixing terms, I think, but, I mean, the bottom line is they, there are rules imposed by the state, the storm, state stormwater rules, that they have to comply with.
I'm not, I'm not disputing that.
And, and they are going to have to comply to the extent of the law.
I understand that, Mark, and I, I'm not saying that, but there is still property that's going to drain onto our properties.
Yeah.
Little, but there is still water, and as you know, we have a serious problem in that area-
Yep.
...with water.
Yeah, and, and I just want to assure you that our engineer, our engineering department has reviewed it, has made comments that this engineer, their engineer is going to have to design it and, you know, subject to, to our engineering department's approval. And, you know, I'm not an engineer, so I don't want to get into the details of it, but basically, they need to detain the water in such a way that the water doesn't run off at a greater rate than it does now.
Correct, and I, I buy that.
So they have to hold it and then let it go at a more even rate, so the degree of flooding isn't increased. That's generally what they need to do.
I, I agree, man. And the property back there where IHOP, we went through the same thing, as you know, years ago, and I still have an issue down there, and it's, it's not theirs, it's the nature of the property and the fact that all these properties were built up around us and the soil we have, but we're trying to minimize it, and we've got a new neighbor coming in. We just want to be comfortable with what, what we're getting handed. The lights are a big issue. We did have issues when Chauncey was there with one big spotlight they had in the back, and that's been resolved, and that got torn down. But certainly, we'd like to put a retail timelit on this parking lot. So I understand the lights will go out an hour after they close, but can they close at nine o'clock and the lights be out by ten? Is that unreasonable? Especially if DOT is directing the type of businesses you can put in there.
What's the latest to you?
I, I can't agree to that. If, if I have a restaurant that's a fine dining restaurant that wants to stay open until ten or eleven o'clock at night, we may want to be open. There is nothing in this township that requires any retail establishment in a commercial zone to close at a certain time or turn, turn their lights off at a certain time, so we can't agree to that. I mean-
I mean, you know, generally, if it's a typical retailer, it will be there, my guess is it probably will be nine or 10 o'clock at night, but I can't agree to a condition in case we have a restaurant or another user that may be open later than that.
But you can't agree to an hour past closing.
Absolutely.
You can't agree to a certain closing time.
I can't agree to a closing time.
The other thing is, the lights fixtures, if I recall correctly, are 12 feet?
They're 12 feet high, backshielded.
Fairly minimal.
That's as low as they go. For a commercial site, that's absolutely as low as they go.
Yeah, so that's, that's good. Yeah, I think the shielding and, you know, the downward facing lights is going to be critical, and maybe after Mr. Stensland's done, you can address the issue of screening that he brought up to start with.
Okay. Okay, I'm pretty much done, and I hear what you're saying, I had to get it out there because if we can minimize the light exposure and the activity at night, we would appreciate it. But my biggest things are, don't be fooled by the traffic flow, because it is a serious problem Route 27. Serious problem. And secondly, the aesthetics of a fence to my neighbors and to the property owner, I think would behoove him to do it. One, make his property look better, and also give some comfort to myself and my neighbors. And I think that'll do it, thank you very much.
Sir, before you leave, could I just ask you a question? How long you lived on, you live on Claremont?
Pleasant Plains Road.
Pleasant Plains, how long you been there?
Um...
I mean, were you there with the other operations, like Chauncey's or Franklin Park Inn?
I was there when Varga's old fuel company was...
Oh, yeah, okay. How was that, when was the Franklin Park Inn? Before it was Chauncey's, it was Franklin Park Inn. Did that traffic do the same thing? I'm just curious, I'm not...
I wasn't in tune to it as much at the time.
Oh, okay. I just was wondering how that reacted, you know?
Now I'm older and more relaxed, and you pay attention more, you know?
Okay.
We've always had water issues back there, but it...
Yeah, well, unfortunately, the nature of the ground and the nature of the land.
Right. Any further questions, or?
Thank you.
Thank you. I did speak to my client while Mr. Stensland was speaking concerning the issue of a fence, and my client is agreeable to putting a fence around the perimeter of the property, except where there are commercial uses next to us. But all the residential properties, we will put a fence around our property abutting any residential dwelling. Six-foot-high stockade.
Just to clarify, so that's the rear, and then when you're looking along the side, I guess it'd be the right, along the right side?
Along the right side, it...
Would that be the rear of the properties? That's the rear of the residential properties along Pleasant Plains?
That is correct. The rear, it appears there is, according to the...
And then along the left, that's commercially zoned, but I guess it has a house on it. Is that, is that, you're not going to put the fence along that?
Well, the house is abandoned.
The house is abandoned, and we're not going to put it against that.
And that's commercially zoned, but you're talking along the rear and then that right side?
The right side.
For the homes along Pleasant Plains.
Up to where the dog is, basically?
Yeah.
That is correct.
L-shaped, it'll be like in an L shape, basically.
Lots, 29, 30, 28, and 27.02, or there's lots that would be fenced.
Okay, and then your landscaping would go in front of the fence?
In front of you.
Can you, can you have the traffic engineer explain the left turn question? It was, I, Peter, I believe you represented IHOP. I vaguely recall the left turn restriction being a DOT requirement, I vaguely recall that, but if you could explain, I mean, you know IHOP, I don't know if you know how the rules may have applied to IHOP versus this site?
Well, I think the two sites are different for a number of reasons. One, the IHOP site is a higher traffic generator, more traffic in and out of that site based on, based on the size of the property. Two, it's closer to Henderson Road traffic signal. Route 27 is wider there, there's more lanes to cross. Right along our site frontage, it's one lane in each direction with a shoulder, so it's a smaller roadway cross-section. So based on that and the lower traffic generator, it's my opinion that that's, you should allow full movements at that location. Because again, if you do not, and you restrict left turns on a 24/7 basis, you're promoting illegal U-turns and other undesirable movements along Route 27. And this, and again, this development is consistent with other similar-sized developments along Route 27 where full movements are permitted.
Yeah, I mean, I think somebody going north on 27 and making the left out of your site, if that was me, and I wanted to say, go to South Middle Bush Road, I would go up and use the light at Claremont. I would not cut through Pleasant Plains, because it's probably harder for me to get across the traffic, right, with no signalization there.
That was my experience when, you know, the multiple times I've been out there during the peak hours.
The only thing I was going to suggest is, you know, you could do one of these things, and I don't necessarily prefer this, because I don't think it's enforceable, at least by the client, is, you know, you see it at various intersections, right, no left turn, four to seven or something, so you restrict it during peak hours. It's one thing to enforce that on a public township road, you can put a cop there, I don't know how you're going to enforce it, that's why I didn't suggest it at first.
Well, and I'm sure the township has with site plans Title 39, I mean, that is something enforceable, but I don't think you want to have your police force dealing with that when they have other, more important issues to deal with.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah, that was my first thought when we were just talking about left turns in general. It's just, I think it's just going to be difficult to, yeah, enforce it. I mean, I see it in any number of places around town, I believe right down here, coming on, off of Wilson is a no-left from certain hours, but...
And I think pretty much it's going to be self-regulated, based on the type of use here. It's not really going to be transient, it's going to be people who use it on a regular basis, and they're going to be familiar with what time of days to go here and what they're more comfortable with and plan their trips accordingly.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else?
I have mixed feelings about putting a sign.
Well, don't forget, we sort of are in public, I don't know if we want to continue with the public unless you're specifically addressing Mr. Stensland's comments and then come back to board comments after that, or, I don't know what you were going to say.
Whatever you want to do. I just have a comment about the left turns.
Go ahead with that, then, you know, might save us a public comment.
It may be, it may not be the most enforceable thing that you can do. It is used in different places. I think it does have a value from the point of view that probably a pretty good number of people that are coming out will see the sign and not break the law. There always are people who will. And in that case, there is a deterrent factor from that point of view, so I don't necessarily think that that's something we should just throw aside and not consider. I'd be very happy with that part of it. You know, a sign that left turns seven to nine, four to six, something like that. Someone does get in an accident, there is an issue, you know, and they get a tippet out of it, they, at least there is an enforcement from that point of view. And if it's really bad, and people are disregarding it, you can, you can have the owner, someone ask for some enforcement, you know, for a certain amount of time, and clean it up. I don't think, I just have a problem with us deciding that nobody's going to listen to it anyway, so we should abandon the idea of it.
It's an argument.
Well, just to carry that one step further, though. Let's say you do that, where is the, for the northbound person who makes the right only out of the, out of the area, where do they turn around to go north? What illegal move do they make there to go north? They live north, they came from the north, they're going back north, where do they turn around? What they do when they come out of IHOP, they go on to Stewart Avenue or Henderson Road to Stewart, and do a U-turn in the middle of Stewart and come back out and then go north. I mean, it's like somewhere along, there's an illegal action taking place, because we have a restricted, I'm not saying it shouldn't be restricted at IHOP, I'm just saying, that's what actually happens.
Or you're adding additional commercial trips to the residential streets in Society Hill, as people use that, try to use that street network, I mean, that's...
Yeah, I mean, I go down Stewart Avenue and come back through Claremont Road, go north, you know, I mean, to South Middle Bush Road, go north.
You can do that.
But not, most people, I lived in town for 47 years, nobody else is going to do that.
Well, you could say if it's this kind of a service facility, the people that use it will learn those ways to make those turns if that applies.
Oh, they may do that over time.
So you can't, you can't be sitting in everybody's car regulating everything, but I just think we should do what we do.
No, what I mean, if you make a rule, there should be some reasonable expectation of it having, of it being successful, that's all I'm saying.
You don't know the use, I think Bob LeCorte had a probably comment.
Just real quick, one of my favorite pizzerias down here is Sansone Brothers, and I tell you what, if I go there around 6:00 to pick up a pizza, and I make a left-hand turn to go back north, I don't even take, I just go right to CVS, go right down the road and come all the way back down. I won't even take the chance, because there's, the traffic there is incredible. Maybe to do that four to six is not a bad idea, just as, Bob, what you said is a deterrent. You have it coming out on Amwell Road during school time. Well, when you're coming out of school, there are no left-hand turns by the Board of Education.
You have it at the other end of the...
Yeah. So, I mean, it's something to consider and not just toss out. All you need is one person to get hurt, and I know you hear that all the time and all that, but that, as a deterrent, if you have, and I don't know what restaurants you're going to have in there or whatever, and that's a problem too.
Well, I think any type of quality restaurant usually has their activities after 6:00, after the commuter hour, as far as their height of activity, so I don't see that to be the big impact as far as left turns out. If we have cleaners in there or some other type of florist, those type of uses may have incur left turns during the peak hours, but if we get a quality restaurant, it's going to more or less, their peak activity is going to be more or less after 6:00 PM.
Yeah, I could see a florist, cleaner, people going out of work from 4:00 to 7:00 o'clock doing that.
The other thing, and quite frankly, I'm sort of familiar with the traffic patterns, having been involved with the IHOP application and being down there. I think, well, first of all, I think the board needs to understand that whatever condition they need to, may or may want to, may or may not want to impose, is going to be subject to the DOT anyway. They're the be-all and end-all, and I think the DOT can override whatever condition you impose. But the bottom line is, I think what Jim has pointed out is in reality the case, is that what you're going to do is force people to do other maneuvers which may be equally, I don't want to say dangerous, but equally problematic to the traveling public. And the other thing, I mean, if you're going around a block, which is a block in the older section of town, and forcing somebody to do that, that's not a big deal. But here, if you're forcing somebody to go around a block, you're throwing them into a residential neighborhood, and then bringing them back out into another residential neighborhood. And again, some of those people are going to do that rather than, than wanting to make that left-hand turn. However, if somebody has the opportunity to make that left-hand turn and can make it, you know, they should be allowed to make it so that they are then not impacting residential neighborhoods. Because you're going to, you're going to put them down onto Stewart, you're going to bring them back down onto Claremont, and again, you're going, especially if they're going up Route 27 to North Brunswick, you're bringing them through residential neighborhoods in Franklin Township.
Okay, but there's a balancing act then that has to take place, because the only times that we're talking about restricting it is during the peak traffic times, and the truth is that those people making that left turn out of that facility from 4:00 to 6:00 also are risking a lot of impact to the traveling public that's on 27 itself. So...
Well, let me do this, this discussion could go around and around for a long time. I don't want to take up any more of the public's time, I think we know the options, and we can have a board discussion on those options when we go to make a motion on the resolution. So let's continue with the public. Anybody else on that?
Hi, I'm Holly Hardaway. H-A-R-D-A-W-A-Y.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this board is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I own the property at 7 Pleasant Plains Road, immediately adjacent to Arthur Perry Plastic Surgeon and this property. Just as a pointed question, so a fence is now going to be constructed that will go adjacent to what Arthur Perry's concrete wall already is, and then along all those properties, the top of this drawing, is that right? Okay, and could you describe the kind of trees that are going to be planted there? Or do you know that yet? And the height?
And these may be slightly subject to change, in case Mr. Healy wants us to change something, but...
The, there are a number of existing deciduous trees there that will remain. We will supplement them with red maples, and then also a series of cypress that will help buffer that whole area there. And that will be separating, those landscaping will be placed in between the proposed curb line and the proposed new fence.
Okay, and the cypress are, would be, cypress that would grow to be approximately how tall? Or could we specify that we would love for them to be eight, 10, 15 feet tall?
Oh, they'll be taller than that.
Okay.
Yes.
Not a planting, no, 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 no. She's just asking, when would they grow?
How large at planting?
At planting, four to five feet.
Okay. And then, and then there's red maples as well, which will be taller than that at planting?
That's correct. And they'll, they'll be the two-and-a-half-inch caliber.
Okay, thank you. And what would be the maintenance for those trees? Say, you put them in and 50% die, would you all be taking care of watering them and maintaining them over time?
There is, we are required to be in compliance with the site plan, which means those trees have to be there. Also, there is a maintenance bond that is posted with the township after we complete the installation, which ensures that those trees will be maintained. If they don't, there's money in place for the township to force the maintenance of those trees.
Thank you. I echo a lot of what Keith Stensland was saying earlier. We do have a big water problem. When we get a minimal amount, a moderate amount of rain, in my backyard, there's at least six inches of water sitting there. So anything you can do to pitch that property away from our residential property would be greatly appreciated. I understand that you're going to try and, you know, make accommodation to take that water away, but if you could really be mindful of that?
I think the biggest help that it will be is, right now, there is no curbing around the perimeter of the parking area, and there will be curbing, and the pavement will be pitched to enter into the detention system, so you should see an impact right away from these improvements.
Okay, that's great. And the lights that are going to be 12 feet high, will they be aimed to not illuminate the properties beyond the property line of your property?
That's correct, yes. Any of the light fixtures that will be installed along the rear of your property will have what we call a back shield that will prevent light from spilling over the property line and into your backyard.
And trash, you said the trash would be picked up so that it wouldn't be in the middle of the night, but does that also mean that it could still happen at 5:00 in the morning? Is there a way that it could only happen in the hours where it's okay to have noise, the same hours that we are allowed to mow our lawn in? Both for deliveries and for trash pickup?
I, I think we can say that trash will not be picked up except during daylight hours.
Daylight, mm-hmm.
Is that acceptable?
Well, I don't know, I'm not trying to argue with people, but, I mean, daylight may not be till 7:00 o'clock, your guy may, I think you want to specify an hour, I mean, sometimes they come at 6:00, you know, or, you know, I think you want to say an hour.
You want to say not before 7:00 AM?
That's up to you, I just think it'd be better...
Well, we can, obviously, it's going to be a private hauler who we can request.
Yeah, I'd rather give a time, it's a lot easier for us to, if we have to enforce that, to have a time.
Between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, is that...
Yeah, that's, hours are always better.
That'd be great, thank you. And likewise, for deliveries, can we avoid deliveries outside of that time zone as well? The noisy trucks backing up, the only big deal. We've got children in these families, in these properties here, sleeping, we've got people living there.
We have, first of all, we don't know who the tenants are, number one. And, well, we can control, because we hire the trash hauler, and we can tell them when to come. It... we can control because we hire the trash hauler and we can tell them when to come. It may be difficult for us to tell somebody, our tenant's delivery guy, you can't come at certain times. My guess is, most of the time, they're not going to be coming during those early morning hours. But to say that we can control it, I don't think we can.
Yeah, I'd hate to have like a bagel shop there. And, I mean, the bagel shop guy, they can have their deliveries in the middle of the night because that's when they're making the stuff. So, that's, that's a, that's a difficult condition to put into effect. It would probably limit their ability to get someone. We do have a noise ordinance and if they're above that noise ordinance, we can enforce that. No matter what time of day, there's different, you know, specifications for different times of day.
Okay. So, that if it were to be disruptive, we could report it to you all and then something could be done?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. And would you be able to describe the parking arrangement? Will the cars be facing toward our properties there? Or is there a way that the configuration of the parking lot could be so that when cars pull in, they have to face the building more rather than face the fence line in our properties?
Well, obviously, the parking area that's along the rear of your property or along the easterly property line, as those vehicles park, yes, they will be facing your property. But the fence that will be installed there will be six feet high, which will protect you from having any lighting from those vehicles coming into your property. Between that and the landscaping, it will certainly be buffered.
Okay. And providing that it is a fence, that it is solid and it is not alternating...
It will be. It'll stock a fence. Correct.
Because that has been a problem elsewhere. And then lastly, I would just echo the problems with the traffic and the turning. We are directly, my house is directly across the street from Six Mile Reformed Church. And ever since Kindercastle went in, for example, everyone comes in Pleasant Plains and they circle right around, right in front of Keith's house and my house and in front of Six Mile Reformed Church, even though there's signage right there that says, "No turns, no U-turns." And numerous times, we're coming out of our driveways and there's cars circling around, turning around. So, I know we don't want to create more problems like that, but I think the left-hand turn out being limited would be something that I would also advocate for. And, you know, if people need to make a right turn out of this property and get onto Henderson and hit down to Route 1 and go left or right on Route 1, let them do that. That's what I have to do sometimes, you know. It's, it's not that practical to make a left turn. But I would strongly advocate if you can, you know, limit the hours like was discussed and really consider that because it is a problem with a variety of the streets around. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak on the matter?
Claire Mulry, co-owner at Seven Pleasant Plains Road.
Can you spell your last name?
M-U-L-R-Y.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for the fence. And the, you'll see that we had to plant 32 trees to block what we saw of IHOP after we bought this property. When Chauncey's was accidentally demolished, that fence behind our property got taken down at that same time. So, Mr. Stenzlin has been very helpful in helping us to keep that up. So, I'm very grateful of the fence and I would love to see trees in kind backing that fence. That would be great. I'm mostly up here to echo that traffic thing. I have not made a left off Seven Pleasant Plains Road in the last six months on a weekday. It doesn't matter if it's peak time or not because I feel like I'm taking my life in my hands. I was home and 35, I totally understand that people will go into residential neighborhoods because I live it every day. I've almost been hit three times in the last two months pulling out of my driveway as people are either cutting through Pleasant Plains to get to the Franklin Park School or as they turn around as they're picking their kids up. I think if you look, Arthur Perry's driveway is a right turn only and it will be adjacent to this driveway that you want to be moving in both directions. So, I just want to bring that up because I do think it's safe. I do, I do not think it's that much of a hardship to go down to Middle Bush or to Stewart or to make a left onto Henderson and go back if you want to go north. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is James White. I live at 3073 Route 27, Franklin Park, plus I have property on 15 Pleasant Plains Road.
Spell your last name for me.
W-H-I-T-E.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give to the board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Well, for one thing, I was worried about the garbage pickup because that's, that's really pain, you know, having it come pick up so early in the morning. So, 7:00 would be nice for having a garbage pickup. And the water runoff was my concern, but you all took, took consideration of that and everything. I wanted to sidewalk out towards 27 a little bit more. And the traffic that goes up and down 27, at peak hours, you cannot really make a left-hand turn there because you got four, two lanes going north, closing into one, and you, you're right, at that point, right there, you have the exit of this property. So, it would be very, very unsafe to make that left-hand turn coming out of there. Plus, in the morning too, all the traffic coming out of Pleasant Plains and Claremont coming down 27, you know, to go left is impossible. I have to go right all the time. I don't go left because of the daycare across the street, because of IHOP, because of the development across the street for me. It's very unsafe. So, there should be some kind of sign saying, "Left-hand turns only." That's about it. I thank you.
Hey, thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one else coming forward, I would move that the public portion be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, with that, Peter, anything else addressing the public and then we can have whatever board discussion we...
Very briefly, I know you guys will kick it about, but I think all the issues that were raised by the public, other than the issue of the left turn, I think we have addressed and will address. And I think once this site is developed, some of the concerns and some of the problems they have will be alleviated. So, hopefully, those things will make everything better. Regarding the left turn, I understand the concerns that were raised by the neighbors. The problems that we have is that we have a piece of property that is in a commercial zone, fronting on a state highway. That property also, based on the history and the narrowness of the lot, restricts, as testified to by Mr. Kennel, the number of users that we can have, which makes it a low-traffic generator site. In order, my concern is if the board imposes restrictions on that driveway, we are taking away the ability for this site to perhaps succeed and putting it in a position for it to fail. People will do what they have to do. And I understand, I hear all the neighbors saying, you know, "We don't make left turns out of there and we don't do this and we don't do that." I am sure that users of this site ultimately will learn how to navigate their way around if they have a difficult time making a left turn. But to say to somebody, when they have the ability to make the left turn, that you can't make it, then makes this site inconvenient and maybe makes it less desirable for a potential tenant to even rent in that facility because he's going to say, "I may not want to rent space in there because my customers can't make that left turn out." And I think, you know, it's not an easy decision or an easy answer, but all of the other smaller centers, and there are a few of them along that stretch of Route 27, are not restricted. Some of the larger centers on Route 27 in that area are not restricted. And I think what you're doing by imposing a restriction is imposing an economic disadvantage to the tenants in that center and to the owner of the property, which may make the center perhaps unrentable or more difficult to rent. And again, as these people who live there, and I understand the situation, I do travel there fairly regularly, people are not going to make the left-hand turn and are going to make the right turn when it is impractical or impossible. But to say you can never make that left turn or you can't never make it between 4:00 and 7:00 PM when there may be opportunities because there are traffic lights both on Henderson and on Claremont, and there are sometimes gaps where you have the ability to make those left turns, but to say to people, "You can't do it," I think becomes problematic. And I would respectfully request that the board not impose that condition because I do think it does put this center and this property owner and perhaps the potential tenants at a disadvantage. And again, we're talking about a relatively small number of trips that are generated from this site. There were reasons why, and I did the IHOP site, and there were reasons why that left turn was imposed. As Mr. Kennel said, that that's a completely different situation than this situation.
But as you said, you know, the DOT decision sort of trumps all. So, I don't recall what we imposed for the IHOP site, but the DOT certainly imposed the...
But, but, but your decision may also have some weight with DOT. You're right, they trump all. And they may say that we can have full movements or they may say we can't, and they may also accede to whatever the requests are of this board. And quite frankly, you know, I understand the situation. It's not an easy decision. And I know Mr. Thomas has a facility across from his house that has restrictions on left-hand turns. And yet, I hear from Mr. Thomas from time to time that people make left-hand turns coming out of that driveway when they're not supposed to be making them because they have the ability at certain times of the day to make them. But, but again, here we have, you know, a commercial roadway, zone commercial with commercial establishments, and most of them along that stretch have the ability to make those left-hand turns. And I, and I think, again, you're putting this site at a disadvantage, especially when you have a fairly small site with limited trips that are being generated from this site.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. So, as, we really don't probably need to continue with a large discussion. There's, everything else seems fairly concrete, so we can probably make a motion. The only really thing we have to discuss, and the way I see it, is this very issue. So, and to me, there's probably three pretty clear options. Option one, allow full movement. Option two, recommend that there's no left-hand turn at any time. Option three, recommend left-hand turn restrictions at certain peak hour times. And, you know, if I could get some brief sense, starting with the right side and working what everybody feels on that so that we can kind of coalesce around a motion, that would be, that would be great. So, I'll start with you, Bob.
I like the limited timeframes. And if DOT trumps it, DOT trumps it?
Mr. Mittler?
I'm sort of also troubled by this. I mean, it's a, it's a very difficult question. And I do understand the position of the people from the public that have spoken. I, however, also understand what the lawyer for the applicant has put forward. My experience there is, and I do occasionally go to some of the shopping centers, and I remember going into the apartment complex where Real Drive is and coming out. This was when there was a discussion of people from that development cutting through Whitehall Manor, which I think is still an ongoing discussion. And I can understand why they do it because you can't make a left-hand turn out of there for a long, 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 long time. And I guess in, and there's a restaurant that I go to in one of the little shopping centers north of, north of this site. And when I pull out of there, if I look and I can actually make a left-hand turn, it's like a shock. It's a surprise. But occasionally, it does, it does happen. I think people using this shopping center will learn very quickly on their own without a sign that making a left-hand turn is, is not the way to go. And, and most will quickly learn not to even try to do that. So, for that reason, I'm, I'm willing to let it be.
Okay.
Okay. I would encourage option one. If there's any control on that, let DOT control it. So, I'm up for option one.
Option one being no restriction?
No restriction at all.
Mr. Thomas?
Well, I heard what you said about it possibly being an economic liability. I'm not sure I completely agree with that. If it's that difficult to make a left turn out of that facility during those two times of the day, it's going to be an economic liability whether we put a restriction on it or not. Because as Mr. Mittler said, people will find their way around it. I just, you know, you're also right that people in the facility across the street from me make left turns when they're not supposed to. Most of the time, when I see, when I observe that that happens, it's a, it's an issue of them forcing themselves out onto the street. And that's where I meant before, where you have to balance the other side of it and that would be the safety to the people on 27, even though it, probably most of them aren't residents or anything like that. But it's dangerous for those people, for people to make those left turns out. I think that's a consideration that should have been dealt with when this project was being planned. And I, I think we, I still would be for doing what I think is, is the right thing, at least prohibiting it during certain times. If, if people are going to do it, they're going to do it. And we're not going to stop everybody, but we may stop some.
Victor and Jim. Start with Victor.
If I may. I think if we restricted during certain hours, I think it would be a benefit. We'd actually encourage people, kind of enforce people legally, make a right-hand turn, get out of the parking lots so the person behind them can make a right out of the parking lot and so on and so forth. If the person up front during peak hours has to make a left, everybody's backing up behind them. So, I thought it would be a good idea during peak morning hours and peak afternoon hours to put a restriction on our left-hand turn.
Thank you. Jim?
Frankly, I'm more inclined to let the driveway be a free-moving driveway and let the pattern develop as it will develop. If you can't make a left turn, you're not going to make a left turn. You go down on Route 1, which is a much bigger highway and has all kinds of commercial facilities along Route 1, and then there's a few that are controlled intersections and there's many that are open driveways. And what you do is, if you want to make a left, you have to wait for the light to give you the gap in order to make the left. And it works. I mean, it's not a, it's not rocket science. I mean, you're the driver. If you pull out in front of somebody without seeing them, naturally, you're going to have an accident. I'm not sure that it's a really, this is a low-trip generator anyway. I'm in favor of just leaving it alone, but I go, whatever the board decides. But of course, I'm going to, my opinion is it should be left alone. A free-moving driveway, it'll develop its own pattern.
Okay. Yeah, and lastly, you know, my opinion is, you know, I agree with Bob Mittler that it is a difficult issue. You could logically extend the argument to say then, "Why, why even do it for the IHOP? The same traffic patterns would eventually develop." And it is a bigger site, that's true, but, you know, you may be exacerbating that even further with the IHOP because you're going to, again, force people onto residential streets. That point was made by your, by your traffic attorney, which is a good, a good point. It is, and can be, I think, self-regulated. I think it can, there is also a reasonable argument for certain types of hours of restriction. And then there's, of course, whatever the DOT will do. But, you know, Peter's right in the sense that our opinion may hold some sway over that. So, I, I think if it was a larger trip generator... our opinion may hold some sway over that. So I, I think if it was a larger trip generator than it is, there could be an idea that, you know, there, there's always going to be permutations. People are going to break the law. People are going to find a way out, even if you put a sign there. Or, you know, and, and you also are forcing people to, from personal experience, make legal turns or turn around in other residential developments if they do make that right only. You know, that said, it's difficult with the uses. I mean, when you go to IHOP, I, I'm not a traffic engineer, and I didn't stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night, but my understanding from listening to many, many hearings over the years is that when you have a sort of a destination place, like an IHOP, and people go there for certain, for meals, they're very certain defined trip generators. And this sounds like it might be more of an opportunistic, unless there is a high-end restaurant there probably, but, you know, people, people necessarily don't go to a florist at a given time, right? They'll go and pick up their order on their way home from work. So then you're dealing with opportunistic trips of people who are already on the road. That has to do more with generation, but it also says something about when you're turning into and out of the thing. So, long story short, and it may be too late for that, I wouldn't stand on principle with, with any opinion and emotion, other than, you know, I could see it both ways. I, I don't, I don't have a strong feeling. I do, I do believe that it does not warrant, and I don't think anybody else voiced this opinion, a permanent no-left restriction like there is at the IHOP. I could see my way clear to either letting pa, patterns develop as they, as they stand, or, you know, with minimal peak-hour restrictions. So, you know, again, I don't have a, I don't think I have a strong, I wouldn't vote no to either one of those, depending on how things fell. So with that, I don't, I don't know...
But that was good.
I don't know that added a whole lot of clarity, but...
I'm just saying, it's the whole, you're basically...
So somebody needs to make a motion?
Somebody needs to make a motion.
Yep. Somebody just needs to make a motion with whatever is in it, and we'll see where things go.
Be quick. So if the first one to get in the motion is probably the one that's going to pass, given Mike's just, Mike's...
All right, I have the guts. I'll make a motion that there's a restriction of 4:00 to 6:00, and, what do you think it is, 7:00 to 9:00?
Four to 6:00 in the PM, and 7:00 to 9:00 in the AM?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right. That makes the most sense.
Everything else is fine. I have no problem with anything else.
Okay. Do you have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Mr. LaCourte?
Yes.
Mr. Mittler?
No.
Mr. Pettit?
No.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Oniaka?
No.
Chairman Arcini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, 4:03.
Thank you very much.
Democracy in action. Vince, we have anything else tonight? Okay. Something that we probably can unanimously agree upon is a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.